I want to call the February 13th, 2025 O'Fallon City Council Workshop Order. Roll call. Katie?
Mayor Hennessy?
Present.
Councilmember Smith?
She's excused.
Councilmember Roth?
Present.
Councilmember Hurwick?
Present.
Councilmember Thompson? Councilmember Bid?
Present.
Councilmember Cascala?
Present.
Councilmember Kewen?
Present.
Councilmember Adamire?
Presence.
Councilmember Cook?
Present.
Councilmember Ragsdale?
Present.
All right, folks. You have agenda in front of you. What's the pleasure?
Motion to approve Ragsdale.
Second, Adamire.
Motion by Councilwoman Ragsdale, second by Councilman Adamire. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything on the agenda that you folks want to talk about? See none. Workshop discussion items. First is, need a motion. Second for, to approve the City Council Workshop Meetings of minutes of January 23rd, 2025. So move Kewen.
Second Cascala.
Motion by Councilman Kewen, second by Councilman Cascala. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next is Project Home Nonprofit Organization Grant Announcement. Alexis?
Good evening. Thank you guys for having us. My name's Alexis Jaeger. I'm the Public Assistant Specialist here with the City of O'Fallon. And we are here this evening regarding the Project Home Nonprofit Organization Grant. Last year, you, the City Council, graciously authorized the allocation of a portion of our Project Home funding to be used in the form of a grant to support nonprofit organizations that provide home assistance, home repair assistance, rather, to O'Fallon residents in need. So tonight, we are here to present two organizations, Delta Center for Independent Living and Restore St. Charles, with their Project Home Nonprofit Organization Grant checks. Representatives from each organization will then provide a brief update as to how they are going to be utilizing these grant funds to support our O'Fallon residents in need. So we would first like to recognize Delta Center for Independent Living as we present them with their Project Home Nonprofit Organization Grant check in the amount of $9,000, excuse me, $500. And we'll capture this moment with a brief photo. Next, we recognize Restore St. Charles as we present them with their Project Home Thank you very much. So per the grant, each organization will now provide a brief presentation regarding how they'll be utilizing these funds. So I'd like to introduce Lisa Licamelli with the Delta Center for Independent Living. She is their Director of Operations.
Thank you so much. And on behalf of Delta Center for Independent Living, we appreciate, and we receive this with such gratitude. We received this last year as well, and we were able to provide an updated, remodeled bathroom for one of our, for one of the members of the community. We added two ramps in two different homes and also a stair lift. So what we do is support accessibility for individuals who have disabilities, mostly seniors. And the grant that we received goes a long way to help people stay in their homes, age in place, without having to go into care facilities. And it makes such a difference to our community and to the people that we serve. So thank you so much.
Question? Hold on.
You're going to make me answer questions?
You may get a question or two.
Okay.
Questions for Lisa?
All right. Thank you so much. You left me off the hook.
I'd now like to introduce Tom Hutchison. He is the Workday Leadership Team Leader, and he's going to share information regarding Restore St. Charles.
Thank you. Good afternoon. On behalf of Restore St. Charles, I want to thank the City of O'Fallon for these grant funds that have been given to us. It certainly helps our ability to meet the needs of people in O'Fallon and St. Charles County, but primarily City of O'Fallon. I want to tell you briefly about how those funds are going to be used this year. If I can make this work properly. The funds that we have received, we are applying toward a program we called Safe Egress Plus. And those projects will be limited to providing entry decks, rear and front entry decks and doors for mobile homes and houses, entry steps, accessibility, a lot of wheelchair ramps, replacement of deteriorating flooring, which takes place primarily in mobile homes, and to address code enforcement issues, which are customarily skirting issues and yard waste cleanup. We estimate that the $15,000 will probably provide assistance for 12 to 15 projects that we can do in the City of O'Fallon. The project, the grant funds, will be used to cover material costs, disposal fees, and any equipment rentals that we may incur. It is not used for any labor, for drafting any plans, or for any project management. All of that is done on a voluntary basis by the people that participate in Restore St. Charles. Our project leads come from O'Fallon Code Enforcement, healthcare advocates, social workers, school districts, and individuals who contact us requesting services because they're aware of what we do and maybe have done for a neighbor. Each month, the project manager leadership team meets and prioritizes the requests for services. We go over what's already in our queue and what has come in since the last monthly meeting, and we prioritize those projects based upon the urgency of the request for services. And Restore agrees to verify the following with respect to each potential grant worksite. We want to make sure that the worksite is within the approved O'Fallon residence area, the scope is within the bounds of what the projects, as we just described them, and that the household income meets the guidelines for this grant project. And each month, Restore St. Charles will submit a report showing what we have done in the prior month, what expenses have been incurred, how those have been incurred, and how much funds remain from the program. And just to give you an example, this will be the first month, February 15th will be our workday, and this will be the first month in which we are able to do a couple of projects that fall within this grant program. So the first one we're going to do is a home in O'Fallon. The woman who lives there is a double amputee and needs assistance to be able to get out of the house. And as you can see, there's kind of temporary little ramps that are there, but they are steep and they don't quite meet the needs of this individual. So we're going to construct a ramp out the front door and then down the sidewalk so she has access into the house and also to a vehicle. And then the second project we're going to do is for a client who has the onset of dementia and has a history of falling. And this came as a referral from the St. Charles County Ambulance District, and we're going to install in the garage a handicap ramp, so, to provide safe ingress and egress from this individual into their house. One of the benefits of doing of this program is that the, a lot of individuals will contact the St. Charles County Ambulance District to get assistance to get in and out of their homes. And when we are able to provide ramps, it eliminates the need to call for those services. So, and a lot of what we do is constructing these access ramps. So again, on behalf of Restore St. Charles, I want to thank the city for these grant funds, and we certainly intend to put them to meeting the needs of residents of O'Fallon. Thank you.
Questions for Tom? You got lucky again.
Thank you very much.
So again, I just want to thank you all for making this grant opportunity possible for these organizations and for the impact that they and Project Home will continue to have here in our O'Fallon community.
Thanks, Alexis. Appreciate it. Next is the Acceptable Use Policy Presentation. Jason?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Tonight, I wanted to briefly talk about expanding our acceptable use policies for technology usage throughout the city. Just a quick overview of what that is. An acceptable use policy is something that we give all of our full-time employees that pretty much just sets out standards as to how and how they should be using technology, whether it's a device, email accounts, network access, and laying out the do's and don'ts. So please do protect your password. Please do lock your computer when you're stepping away, but do not download a virus on our network. Do not use a computer for personal gain. And currently, that acceptable use policy is in our employee handbook, which each employee is given on their first day of employment. But as the years have gone by, the use of technology has expanded to more than just the full-time employee groups. We have part-time employees that use our equipment or issued an email account. We have court officials, such as the prosecuting attorney. We have volunteers, interns, vendors, contractors, and also yourselves, elected officials. So as the list of different groups has expanded that uses technology, it seems like it's a good practice to create different types of acceptable use policies for these different groups to agree to read through and sign. So as you can see from at the bottom of the slide deck, there's a few different types of acceptable use policies that have been drafted out, and they're all different to meet the needs of the different groups. So for example, for volunteers and interns, the ramification, if you will, of not abiding by the acceptable use policy is, we may say, thanks for your service, but unfortunately, you've done something you shouldn't have done. We no longer can offer you an assignment. For vendors and contractors, if we issue them a computer because they're working on a piece of our equipment and they do something they shouldn't do, we may be within our rights to terminate that contract. So each of these acceptable use policies are slightly different depending on who they're going to. And what I would like to do is to issue these to the different groups and open up for discussion to see if there's any questions or concerns you may have to do so. But also, because one of those acceptable use policies pertains to you, the elected officials, wanted to get your thoughts or a nod of approval to see if you are okay with being issued one of these acceptable use policies, not just for you currently, but for any future elected official to sign, just making you aware of what your, the expectations of being given access to our network and emails, such as making sure you're keeping your password secure, taking care of cybersecurity training, and so on and so on. But on behalf of the council, any questions?
I was just going to ask, this also does with the security training and know it before you go and
Yes, sir.
all that you have to do so Mr. Adamire doesn't have to get on us to get him completed?
That is one of the criteria that cybersecurity training for all our different groups should be taken care of in a timely fashion.
Okay. Questions for Jason? So we're going to have to sign these, or?
Yes, so.
I would prefer, I would prefer us to look at them, sign them, and give them back to you.
That is my preference as well. And actually, I've got them printed off, ready to go. So after the workshop, I'll lay them out at your areas. And when you return, if you'd like to read through and sign them, I'll collect them and file them away.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Strategic Plan Update. Mr. DeBauw?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I want to apologize in advance. My voice has been coming and going all week. So if it goes out on me in the middle, I apologize.
You're up, Snowden.
This is our quarterly strategic plan update. We're getting close to the end. As you guys may remember, this was a two-year strategic plan that was essentially designed to go through the spring of this year. So we're really getting close to the end. So there's not a whole lot to update on, but there's actually a couple of big ones that we'll talk about. Regarding municipal implementation, we are all but complete with the utility billing transition. The bills will be going out here shortly for, with the new system, and that'll be the first time. So that's good news there. In terms of instituting mobile ticketing for code enforcement, unfortunately, the Regis system that we wanted to use originally did not work out for us. So now we're kind of exploring new options on that. Right now, we're working with the police department to see if their digit tech system, the digit ticket system that they currently use would actually work for this as well. So unfortunately for timeframe on that, I don't have one because we're basically back to square one on that. So we'll be moving forward there. The website rebuild is complete, so that's a nice one to get off the, get off the list. This is where there's just somewhat of a question for you all while I'm standing here. Under emerging technologies, as you may or may not know, the city did not receive a grant for the electric vehicle charging stations. So that is essentially done at this point. We had selected a vendor to possibly transition the charging station that's over at Civic Park to a paid system. Right now, it's free. Essentially, the cost to do that, we'll never make the money back. And since we don't have a grant to pay for it, we're, unless the council objects, we're just going to leave it as it is, and it'll just stay there as long as it's continuing to work. So if there's no objection, that's how we'll proceed with that one. Under employee, oh, sorry.
Any, just leave it there?
I want to leave it there.
You have a problem with not leaving it there? There you go.
Thank you very much. In terms of employee health and wellness, we did an RFQ for that. We plan to, we're awaiting the responses right now. We also plan to implement mental health checks per state statute. So that's actually underway already, starting in quarter four. On HR, we completed our training for ergonomic programs in January, and the Safety and Risk Manager, Management Coordinator is working on designing our program. Under competitive pay, we did issue an, or excuse me, we're about to issue an RFP for a consultant to help us with the citywide compensation study as budgeted later this year. In recruitment, HR is working on the recruitment strategy right now for 2025 with a focus on attending job fairs and kind of expanding what we've been doing in that area. And they're working with communications on some promotional materials to target certain positions. Under recycling, as you all know, starting on March 4th, we will be doing the first of our pilot program to bring back single-stream recycling to O'Fallon. So that's extremely exciting. We will continue to work with St. Peter's on finalization of some of the details in the contract. And then as the year goes on, you will see that continue to roll out throughout the entire city. Under branding efforts, we have the new banners that are created for Main Street, and they will be installed shortly. They look really good. And communications is working on the style guide as a follow-up to our website redevelopment. Law Enforcement Training Center, more good news. Phase 1B, which is the shooting range, is nearing completion and will be opening in March 2025. We have our first event out there right around St. Patrick's Day. I forget the exact date. 17th, thank you. The full buildout is underway, and we've progressed to the 50% plan submittal. We're getting that in right now. The final plans are anticipated in quarter two, and completion of the entire site is expected in 2026. Under Parks and Rec Revenue Generating Opportunities, staff has identified additional locations in both Fort Zumwalt Park and potentially near the Ozzy Smith Sports Complex for additional shade structures and pavilions that could be rented out. Those will be included in future budgets as they allow going forward for actually installing those, but we have the locations picked out. Parks is also, Parks and Engineering, I should say, are also working with Great Rivers Greenway on both exploring some opportunities for rental items in city parks and also the greenway path throughout the city. That is being done right now. We'll go to right away later this Project Management is working on a full sidewalk plan that will be presented to you later on this year, probably in April. They're going to present it to the PWA and then bring it to you guys for your comments. And that's going to kind of update how we address our sidewalks going forward across the city. We also have completed all the projects from last year, the annual project on that. We're moving on to 2025. On some of our existing paths, we did, as Mr. Kewen had requested earlier, remove the trees on Mexico Road. So hopefully, that will help preserve that path. And then as the weather improves, our public works staff will go out there and look if there are any places that need to be cleaned up. They will work on that as the summer goes on. Public Works Building, site improvements are complete. The construction contract, thank you, was approved by you in January, and we will be going to work on that here any day now, probably in March. Water System Upgrades, the final remediation work is 90% complete for the water treatment plant filter rehab. So the project that has been going on for two years and never ends is about to end, thankfully. So we'll hopefully, knock on wood, have that done shortly. The water treatment 2 million gallon storage tower liner installation project is complete. Construction is underway for a Luvia Well 6 right outside the water plant. Under Wastewater, we are 50% complete with our headworks and solid handling project at the plant. The new water tower proposed for the northwest side of O'Fallon, the site's been identified. And due to funding issues, construction has been pushed back, is currently not in our five-year CIP, but we'll continue to evaluate our funding going forward and see if there's opportunities to move that back up as we go forward. And on the police side, the CAD RMS project is complete. Under Parks, we are proceeding with turfing Ozzy Smith Sports Complex this year. We have, the RFP is ready to go out. We'll hope to have a contract to you here in, just in a month or two. And construction is scheduled to begin in October so that it's ready for the 2026 season. Good news on the tournament front. This year, we have 29 tournaments booked at Ozzy Smith Sports Complex. That's seven more than we had last year. So we've already expanded the tournaments, the number of tournaments there, and that's without the turf. So that's a positive, and we hope to continue to grow that as we get the turf in the future. The lighting at Ozzy Smith Sports Complex, that project is under contract and is expected to start any day now. Camera installations at Civic are complete. They'll be completed, they'll be installed in Ozzy in March 2025. And we keep looking for an effective way to get the connectivity we need at sports parks so we can complete that part of it as well. And finally, the City Hall East Entrance ADA Improvements, construction documents are complete. We hope to budget that in 2026. That's all I have. If you have any questions, let me know. I'll be happy to answer them otherwise. Thank you very much for your time.
Questions for Tom? See you then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Woods, review of upcoming P&amp;Z Commission Agenda Items.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going over the, we're working on March already. The March P&amp;Z meeting. So we sent out first round comments on this just yesterday, and this is what we have going. So we've got a conditional use permit. This is the old movie theater. It's been vacant for a little bit. We had the esports going in, then we approved the plan for Lava Island to take, take part of it. That part of it is not moving forward, but now we've got proposal to use three of the theater areas for a new movie theater. So yeah, the yellow, it would be the, those are pretty much as-is. Currently, they're going to use those for the theater. And then this is kind of the esports area. This over here is not in the scope at this point. So nothing is planned for over here, but they would use this area for a theater. Since it's been vacant for a while, this use requires a conditional use. That's why this is going back through. We've asked them
Does that come to us?
It'll be, yeah, mhm. Be a conditional use. We've asked them if they're going to be doing any upgrades or anything on the outside. We're not sure right now, but. This is, this is another one that would come to you all. This is a conditional use permit for a shed that exceeds the size that we can allow just with the building permit. This is up in Cobblestone. It's already there. We've heard from the HOA, they don't even allow sheds up here. So this is off to a good start.
I'm on the HOA board, and I can tell you
There you go.
that is correct. And we have been arguing about that for a long time.
Okay, yeah. So yeah, he's, he applied to us, and you know, we do what we have to do with it. We put it on the meeting. But we did send him a notice yesterday that, you know, given that we know that, we're going to recommend denial, you know, so. So that's that one. So this is one that's been approved in the past. It expired. This is the Rooted Garden on Sandrin. This is the Garden Center, the old Burkhamper's site. Their plan has expired, so they've come back through, pretty much wanting to do the same plan that was approved before. They've got, they tore down the building, you know, sometime last year. They want to build a new building and then have storage for plants and stuff. Really, nothing's changed. They do have a couple of minor tweaks to the building, but nothing significant. But this is just a reapproval of the, of the prior plan since it expired. Yep. There's some elevations of the building. Yeah, he was, he was held up trying to get bids on different, different reasons. So we were kind of worried it wasn't going through, but we met with them probably a couple of weeks ago, and he's, he's ready to go. Another shed that succeeds the size that's allowed. This is down in kind of Forest Park area, 407 Briscoe. These folks don't have an HOA, so we don't think they're going to have a problem with it. A shed in the backyard there. This is just a sample of one. This is not already there, I don't believe. And the last thing. So this is down at Market Center Boulevard, kind of across from O'Fallon Road and Highway K where the ambulance district is. Yeah, so the ambulance building is here. We just actually approved a site plan for that cell tower. At our last meeting, they're moving that one. But this is the, this is the parcel. And this is for a goodwill building. They are doing, it would come, this is a permitted use in C2, so it won't be coming to council in that regard, but they are doing a plat. They're subdividing up the property. That would be on as a committee and commission report for a subdivision plat. And this is the elevations of it. One thing that I noticed, it's got dock doors, which I didn't remember, but the one on north end of Highway K has dock doors around back actually also. But one thing I noticed on here is they don't have, like the one on North Highway K, they have like a drop-off area to drop off, which I think works good. This here has got backup spots. I don't know. I've not seen that, but that's different to unload your, yourself. There's no, there's not like a drop-off.
Well, that's a good thing. Yeah, because normally you come in and just drop stuff off and then it stays there. So I take it they're leaving the one on K?
Yeah, I think so, yeah. There is underground detention, I believe it's already there, but they're going to make this common ground and not make it part of the lot. That's part of the plat. And then the last thing, Wade's working on a subdivision code that'll be coming to the council about stormwater piping. That's about all I know about it, and that's all I wanted to know about it. And that's it.
Question for David?
Thanks, sir.
Oh, Mr. I'm sorry, Mr. Kewen.
Yeah, I'm not, it's not really a question, more of a comment. The gas station just north of City Hall that, the canopy, that used to be a used car lot, the canopy collapsed. I have had several calls about how pleased everyone is with how quickly that was cleaned up and not left as a, as an eyesore. So I just wanted to let you know that.
I think that was a Patrick and Bill deal, right? Or Mike?
Mike?
Oh, Wade, okay. A little bit everybody.
It was extremely serendipitous. We had already done an RFP to have that completely removed, and they were going to be removing it in about two weeks anyway. So they just moved up their, their timeframe. So it was, it was very lucky they were able to do that. Right on. Well, it was noticed. I just want you to know that.
Any other questions for David? Thanks, David. Any other items of consideration? Any other items of consideration? Saying none, like I have a motion go to closed session. 6100211, legal action, cause of action, litigation involving a public governmental body and, or, and any confidential privileged communications between a public governmental body or its representative and its attorneys. 6100212, leasing, purchasing, or sale of real estate. And 61002112, sealed bids and related documents until the bids are open and sealed proposals and related documents or any documents related to negotiated contract until the contract is executed or all proposals are rejected.
So move to Ragsdale.
Motion by Councilman Ragsdale, second by Councilman Bibb. Roll call, Katie.
Councilmember Cascella?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ragsdale?
Yes.
Councilmember Adamire?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Yes.
Councilmember Bibb?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurwick?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhn?
Yes.
All right, we'll be up on the second floor at 610. On call February 13th, 2025, O'Fallon City Council Meeting to order. Roll call, Bess.
Mayor Hennessy?
Present.
Councilmember Smith?
She's excused.
Councilmember Roth?
Present.
Councilmember Hurwick?
Present.
Councilmember Thompson?
Present.
Councilmember Bibb?
Present.
Councilmember Cascella?
Present.
Councilmember Kuhn?
Present.
Councilmember Adamire?
Present.
Councilmember Cook?
Present.
Councilmember Ragsdale?
Present.
Thank you. Tony and Dave, we're gonna, we're gonna do this now, before we do the invocation. All right? As we begin, I would like to pause for a moment of silence in honor of Mr. Ron Epps, who recently passed away. He served the city of O'Fallon as a planning zoning commissioner for eight years, or for six years, and a city council member for 2023 to 2025. I'd like to take this moment to reflect and show our respect, and please keep his family in Thank you. Family, please stand for invocation by Brandon Keesley, an associate pastor of the First Baptist Church of O'Fallon, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Roth.
Would you join me in praying? Father, we thank you for this opportunity that we have to gather in this place and do the business of this great city, and our hearts are heavy tonight as we think about the Epps family. And Lord, I pray for your peace, and, and Lord, that you would just continue to shine your face upon them, show them that you love them, and that you're never going to leave them, especially during this time of mourning. And so, Lord, just as we continue to move forward tonight, I pray for wisdom as the city administrators make decisions tonight. May, Lord, everything that's said and done in this place bring glory and honor to your name. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Folks, you have an agenda in front of you. What's the pleasure?
Motion to approve Ragsdale.
Second item.
Motion by Councilwoman Ragsdale, second by Councilman Adamire. Questions or comments? On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Meyer, Major Meyer. First of all, I want to be one of the first to congratulate, congratulate you on your graduation from the FBI National Academy, and I hear you're going to give us a 20-minute speech on what you learned down there.
Thank you, Mayor. I was told to keep it brief or you'll gavel me out of here, apparently. So to give you a brief overview, for those of you who have no idea what the National Academy is, is when you go through basic police academy, consider that your bachelor's degree, and the FBI several times a year puts on an 11-week course for police executives that is considered a master's level program. And so in my case, they bring together 300 police executives from across the country, and in fact, across, from around the world. And in, we had police executives from Palestine, from Ukraine, Ireland, all over the globe. And every time I think I might have a bad day talking to the officer from Ukraine and how he's lost so many of his friends due to wartime situation is certainly a sobering experience. But I can best describe this as basic training versus college. It's been described as Full Metal Jacket versus Animal House. You'll have to come get me. And the curriculum involves advanced police procedures, leadership, media communications, and fitness. And there are weekly fitness challenges. They are named after various parts of The Wizard of Oz, which culminates in the final fitness challenge, a seven-mile obstacle run through the Marine Corps Obstacle Course. And your gift for that, if you ever wondered if the federal government, how their budget is going, you're gifted a yellow brick. So when you see interviews with police executives around, a lot of times in the background, they'll have the, the yellow brick there. And I threw some pictures in there just so you guys kind of have an idea of the experience. The black and white picture is actually when that one comes up. I got hired here last week, was 30 years with the city of O'Fallon for me. And one of the things that you're going to say when you see that is like, man, there it is. Shift work hasn't aged him at all. He looks as young as he ever did. But really, what I want you to take from, in this room is I want to thank you for the support, and I want to say that this city, not just nationally but internationally, we hold up very, very well. In exchanging stories, the political support that I, that we in the department get from the mayor and from you, the council, is absolutely, we are the envy of a lot of other departments nationwide. And it's not just the police department. What Tony does with communications and the media is state-of-the-art. What Tanya is doing with employees and wellness is absolutely what the FBI is preaching. So everything that you guys are doing, O'Fallon holds up very well, and that's part of the reason why I put three decades here, and we have more stuff to come. So I just want to close in saying thank you to the mayor, thank you to the council for the ongoing political support. I really appreciate Michael Snowden and his commitment to training. Definitely have to thank Chief Manetti, Captain Wolf, and Hassellop who covered my job for three months while I was gone. Don't worry too bad, they've paid me back since I've returned. Most importantly, because I need a place to sleep tonight, I want to make sure I thank my wife and my kids, because if you think about leaving for three months and leaving your house over to your spouse, only my wife would have it in better shape than I would, for sure. So thank you again for this. I'm really proud of the city, and I'm proud of this, and thank you for this recognition.
Next, I'd like to have a motion to ratify my appointment of Keith Custer to serve on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board as a board member from Ward Four, filling a remainder of an unexpired term until April of 2025. So move Kuhn.
Second item.
Motion by Councilman Kuhn, second by Councilman Adamire. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, I'd like to have a motion to ratify my appointment of Councilmember Roth to serve as the city council liaison to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Kuhn?
Ragsdale.
Motion by Councilman Kuhn, second by Councilwoman Ragsdale. Questions or comments? On favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? And Councilmember Roth, I just want to thank you for showing up last night, since you weren't actually appointed yet, but you did show up last night to the Parks and Rec Board, and I want to thank you for that.
No problem. I'm supposed to be doing, so learning. Trying to get a head start on.
All right. The recycling industry's changed significantly in 2018, impacting cities around the world. And our residents were no longer able to place paper and cardboard in their recycle carts. In response, O'Fallon placed recycling dumpsters at several city locations so that residents could drive their paper and cardboard to these locations for recycling. Since then, your O'Fallon City Council, the mayor, and the staff have continually worked to find a solution to alleviate our residents' need to drive these items across town. Because our environmental services team's relentless efforts, the city of O'Fallon is excited to reintroduce single-stream recycling through a new pilot program set to begin on March 4th, 2025. Residents will be able to place paper and cardboard, aluminum, steel cans, plastic, and glass in a recycle cart together, together, and the city will pick it up at their curbside on the designated recycle day. There's no longer a need to separate these items and no longer need to drive them to the designated recycling dumpsters located around O'Fallon. I want to thank Steve Bender, Jim Windsor, for their entire team, for their work to bring this great program back to the great city of O'Fallon. Now to introduce the new pilot program and explain a little bit more about it. Our communications team has a video to show, and I've been told that this video is not garbage.
We only have one planet Earth, and we all want to help save her. This year, our environmental services team is making it even easier for you to do your part in this important mission. Now all of your recyclables can go in one place, lessening the inherent confusion of all that sorting and inspiring more residents to pitch in.
2018, we were doing single-stream recycling all the way back to 2005. Things changed in the end of 2018, and when it did, we had no choice but to go through the system that we're using now with drop-off sites for paper and cardboard. Ever since then, residents, city staff have all asked, when can we get back into single-stream? We've been looking for years to try to find an economical way to get back into it that didn't cost the residents an arm and a leg. And we found a way to do it. And so we're ready to start a pilot program, and we will be rolling out single-stream.
Residents will have a new cart delivered to their homes, if they haven't received it already, in which all your recyclables, paper, cardboard, aluminum, and plastic can be placed. For those plastic containers, we don't even have to look for that tiny little number anymore. It's just one cart and done.
Well, it'll make things a lot easier for residents, because at this point, they're having to drive up to one of the drop-off sites to get rid of their paper or cardboard. And that gets to be a problem. You have to load it up, you have to store it in your garage. If they're not doing that, then they're probably putting in their trash can. Now it's going to be simple, and it's a weekly process, so you won't be stacking it up anymore.
This single-stream recycling program begins on March 4th for those with a scheduled Tuesday recycling pickup.
That's what we're referring to as our pilot program, just to make sure everything's running smooth and everything's going the way that we planned for it to go. I know a lot of questions are going to come up from residents in other parts of the town are going to say, when's my turn? The better that this thing rolls out and the quicker that we get people in compliance with it, we'll roll it out to everyone else.
But if this program is going to work within budget, citizens will have to help in keeping the recyclables clean. They're less pristine items, getting rinsed with water first. No clean, no single stream.
We really have to remember the important items like keeping things clean. When I say clean, not just the product, the bottles, the cans, they all do need to be rinsed out and dried the best they can. But really, clean in the sense that the product needs to be clean. The things that can't get recycled, don't put them in your container. If you do, it contaminates the, your container, but it contaminates the load. So we could end up losing a whole load of recyclables because we're not paying attention. So the things that you couldn't put in even before, you can't put in coat hangers, hoses, plastic bags, those are the kind of things.
Residents will be getting a packet of information to help explain the ins and outs of this new process.
On top of that, we're also embedding a label onto the top of the cart that will explain what can be put in the cart and what can't be put in the cart.
Most importantly, if you don't see it on the lid, make sure it doesn't see its way into the bin. When in doubt, throw it out.
So the new single-stream recycling program is not going to cost the residents anymore on their monthly rates. We have not had any increases to residents ever, and we continue to look forward to offering that same rate for as far out as we can stretch it. But it's really important to recycle, and I hope that some of the residents have chose not to recycle during the current program because they couldn't put their paper and cardboard in. Hopefully, they'll come back and they'll start recycling again, because it's important to get this product out of landfills. We end up filling up the landfills. We also don't have any product to get out there and get recycled into new items. It helps create jobs for people that are in the recycling industry. There's a lot of good reasons to recycle. And when it becomes easy like this, why not do it? It really helps.
I want to know who got the camera out of the recycle can. Great job, Tony. Great job, guys. Appreciate it. Brings us to citizens' comments. This is a reminder, it's three minutes per citizen's comment. First speaker is Mr. Dinoff.
Thank you very much, members of council. My name is Arne C. A.C. Dinoff, city public advocate, running for city council. Mayor, I love how you picked the, the list of speakers. You always make me first when I was the last one to submit my public comment card this evening. Appointment of John Roth to yet another board, the Parks and Recreation Board. Why did you reward Mr. Roth with a huge paycheck?
Mr. Dinoff, that is not on the agenda, sir.
It is on the agenda. You appointed him to the Parks-
To the Parks Board, go ahead.
Correct. I've never seen Mr. Roth in any city meetings that I attend, had never seen him at city council or publicly testify. Another meeting for the Parks and Recreation Board, and he gets $20,000 to $25,000 with the travel, the expenses, the reimbursement, the $15,000 salary, and the pension. Why is the city council hiding resolutions and expenditures of our money? Resolution A, $125,000 for water meters. But it's an O'Fallon company, finally. $162,000 for more rock salt for the water. It's a $9,000 increase from 2024. Do we go out for bid? Resolution C, $246,500 for three Ford Escapes, one F3350, one F150, and two Ranger vehicles from Weber Ford of Granite City, Illinois, not even in Missouri. Welcome to our economy. Resolution D, $1.1 million for recycling carts. What's wrong with the current recycling carts that we currently have? In the video, I didn't see much difference in, in the shape. Resolution E, $200,000 for the geographic GIS system. Our system is not accessible to the public like all the other municipalities in St. Charles County. Resolution G, $803,000 for 18 vehicles to Broadway Ford, not the city of O'Fallon, where? The city of St. Louis. Wow, we're driving their economy. Resolution H, solid, solids change in the amount of $331,000 to Contraya Construction Company, who now becomes the highest bidder instead of the lowest bidder. Resolution I, $387,000 for the newsletter. Why can't we print in-house? Ask St. Charles County to do our printing, but have to go to Illinois and Clinton County, more than 75 miles away. Resolution G, the biggest giveaway of the year thus far, corporate welfare, corporate greed to well-off, huge profitable-
You have 15 seconds.
-company, Aldi Distribution, in the amount of $100 million in Chapter 100 industrial revenue bonds. They'll pay no sales taxes, no real estate taxes. We'll have an obligation. We'll own the property and lease back the property for 20 to 30 years.
Mr. Dinoff.
All these.
Mr. Dinoff.
Where is the return on-
Mr. Dinoff, your time is up. Our next speaker is Jamie Crunk.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Crunk, and I live at 1611 Platinum Court. Where do I start? I have made a resolution to come to the city council meeting twice a month because I'm tired of Mr. Dinoff's negativity. We have a spectacular police department. Mr. Myers just told us how great they are, and they continue to be. We're getting a lot of new homes, a lot of new businesses, improvements to the roads on Main Street. Yes, we're spending a little money, but it's necessary to make O'Fallon be the best city that it can be. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rose Uck.
Good evening. My name is Rose Uck. I live at 8007 Grove Court, O'Fallon. I live at 8007 Grove Court, O'Fallon. I think this is the right one. I know I've talked about this one before. It's about Post Farms and Dove Meadows and how it's accessing two roads, only one which goes directly to Duello. This is superimposed of what the new Post subdivision looks like and they're going to do a right-in, right-out. I don't know why they can't do what you did in Monticello off of Highway K and let them go both ways instead of relegating it to right-in, right-out and going through and ruining Dove Meadows subdivision. Plus, I assume you're going to get a stoplight at Welker Parkway, which leads into Post Farms. This was in '23 and I went through the whole thing and lots of houses, lots of townhomes, lots of apartments. By '24, they had-- I know you can't see my finger. They had reduced-- where I have it in green and blue. They had reduced all that down, which is good, but they're still going through Dove Meadows instead of out to Highway N like Montecito does, Monticello. And Monticello on both sides of K goes left and right without right-in, right-out. That was it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our last speaker is Drew Weber.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city staff. My name is Drew Weber with Hamilton Weber Law Firm. I'm here to speak about Bill 7717. Just as a reminder, we are requesting a redo of the annexation at St. Charles County's request. This property, the Post property, which the prior speaker just spoke about, was already annexed pursuant to one statute, but the county has asked that we redo it. I do want to clarify, not that it's related, there's no changes to the plans, but I want to clarify that the access on Highway N for the subdivision will be full access, not right-in, right-out. And there's no apartments that were ever proposed. So, I wanted to clarify those two things. But my main point here is I'm happy to answer any questions you may have and we ask for your reapproval of the annexation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have no more citizens' comments. And Mr. Snowden, just on our first speaker, all the budgeted items, those are all budgeted items, correct?
Yes, that's correct, sir.
Okay. Brings us to Ward Reports. Ward Three.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say congratulations to Major Meyer. Thank you for representing us out in Washington, DC. And then also wanted to point out to Ward Three residents that at the Planning and Zoning Meeting in January, or actually, beginning of February, they had a Dire Road Phase One updated drawing that shows what they're going for for acquisition for right-of-way in East Mints. So, its biggest change is one of the roundabouts has been pulled out. But other than that, it's pretty similar to what we've seen before. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Cascala.
Thank you, Mayor. DM, congratulations, man. We're all very proud of your accomplishments. It's awesome to see our leadership still taking the trainings and taking the growth of our law enforcement seriously. So, thank you for that. On January 30, I was able to attend a ribbon-cutting at Children's Lighthouse Early Learning School at 2570 Summers Road. They are currently enrolling for new students. You can even go on their website at childrenslighthouse.com and request a tour. They are right at the corner of Summers and DD. This facility is top-notch, state-of-the-art, very secure, very welcoming to the children. All the staff there was really nice to the kids that we were able to see. So, I highly recommend you check them out, childrenslighthouse.com, and schedule your tour.
Thank you, sir. Ward Four.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd also like to extend my congratulations to Major Myers and generally to the O'Fallon Police Department. I am ever impressed with the department that we have and I think it-- well, I know it's a key component of why O'Fallon is one of the greatest places to live. So, congratulations to both of you.
Mr. Ademar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Major Myers, congratulations. We're just going to keep on saying it. We're so proud that you were representing us there. So, we know we have the best of the best there. So, also, just a reminder to our residents, we've got a big Saturday. We've got a bulk waste drop-off, the 15th, this Saturday. So, any of your big items, no matter how cold it is, take it out there and get rid of it. So, that's all I have. Ademar out.
Thank you. Ward Five.
Thank you, Mayor. Major Myers, glad you're back. You're my go-to guy on all my emails and when you were gone, I didn't know where to send my emails. I am glad to see you back and congratulations on your accomplishment. And then just one more thing. We have a HOA next Thursday here at the multipurpose room for High Grove Masters and it is from 6:00 to 8:30. So, I hope to see everybody here.
Ms. Ragsdale.
Thank you. Congratulations to Major Myers for doing O'Fallon proud. Thank you, hiding behind the pole back there. Did want to mention, a lot of O'Fallon people have been very excited that this week we-- councilmember Cascala and I attended the ribbon-cutting for Joy's Deli and they are so excited to be in O'Fallon. We are so excited to have them. The owner made a point of saying this is-- first of all, this was the first ribbon-cutting he had ever had and he just couldn't believe that we did it so well the way we did it. So, if you have the chance, make sure to go to Joy's Deli. It's where Sugar Fire used to be on Wing Haven Boulevard and it smelled fantastic when we were in there. And finally, I wanted to wish Happy Valentine's Day to all the lovebirds that are out there.
Thank you. Ward One, Mr. Roth.
Yes, I'd also like to congratulate Major Meyer on his accomplishments. It's-- O'Fallon PD is top of the line. I'm familiar with a lot of them. I did work with the county and I did work with a lot of the county PD through there. O'Fallon's top of the line. And a lot of thanks to Major Meyer. I don't really have no report, no HOAs this month. So, I'm pretty short and simple.
Thank you, sir. Last but not least, Ward Two.
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations, Major Myers, and to the OPD. I think it's just fantastic that you represent O'Fallon and you know we're in such a good national spotlight as well as just keeping our city safe and a great place to live. So, congratulations on that. Just a reminder, I may have sent out some information about the recycling to my neighborhood. I'm pretty excited about it and immediately, everybody said, "Okay, is that this week?" So, for my neighborhood, it's not yet. It is a rollout, as we heard on the video and I just wanted to reiterate that, that when it gets time for your neighborhood to be a part of the rollout, you'll get some additional notifications. But really excited about that. So, thank you to everybody that made that happen. That's it.
Last but not least, Mr. Hurwicke.
Well, thank you, Mayor. No report this evening.
All right. Mr. Snowden.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the contributions of some staff members who are reaching milestone anniversaries. Park maintenance worker Nick Dunn, engineering manager Sean Singer and emergency communications supervisor Cameron Whitworth have all been with O'Fallon for five years. Police officer Corey Burke has been with us for 10 years. Custodian Gaila Dudley has been a valued member of our team for 20 years. And finally, police officer Pat Helton and GIS manager Kevin Kingry have both served our citizens for 25 years. I want to thank all seven of these individuals for being a part of Team O'Fallon for all these years. On January 31, I authorized a purchase of a vehicle from bid 25-002R that was opened on January 30. The vehicle was found and secured with a discount of $9,000 from the retail price, but only if we gave a verbal commitment to purchase that day. This would not be able to wait until the council meeting tonight to receive your authorization, so I made that authorization. Although this is technically considered an emergency purchase, I want you to know that it was not an emergency except as it related to the ability to take advantage of that deal while we could. Please consider this my official notification to you for the record of that purchase. And I have one last-minute thing, if I can read the little print. Volunteer Services wants us to know that they're having a pet food drive for Paws for a Cause and they need your help to reach the goal. If you have dry cat or dog food at home that you're no longer needing or wish to purchase some to donate, please bring it to Volunteer Services or the garage area at City Hall between tomorrow and February 28. All donations will be given to Five Acres Animal Shelter and to St. Charles County Pet Adoption Center. Both shelters help families in the St. Charles County area. They thank you for all of your support and they can't wait to see how much food that we can donate to those amazing shelters this year. And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Brings us to old business. Brings to Bill 7717. Motion for second reading by title only.
Cascala.
Motion by Cascala, second.
Bib.
Second by Councilman Bib. All in favor?
Aye.
Any pose. Mr. O'Keefe.
Bill Number 7717, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance approving a petition for voluntary annexation filed by Hamilton Weber LLC on behalf of DCM Land LLC and the Post Family Limited Partnership regarding certain property contiguous and compact to the city of O'Fallon, Missouri, 103.73 acres located at 1065 East Highway N, annexing said property to the city, affirming and ratifying an agreement relating thereto authorizing other actions in connection with such annexation and repealing conflicting ordinances. I did not write that title.
Motion for final passage.
Cascala.
Motion by Cascala, second.
Bib.
Second, Councilman Bib. Questions or comments? Seeing none, councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting's now closed.
Nine yes, zero no. Bill 7717 passed, becomes ordinance's number.
7177.
7177. Thank you, Bess. Questions or comments on the Committee and Commission reports? You stand as read. Questions or comments on the consent calendar?
Motion to approve, Hurwicke.
Second, Kewen.
Motion by Councilman Hurwicke, second by Councilman Kewen. Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting's now closed.
Nine yes, zero no. The consent calendar's been approved. Brings us to new business. Public comment to consider approval of an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to Ask Mo. 609 West Ridge Convenience LLC to allow a convenience store without fuel sales under certain conditions on a certain tract of land located at 615 West Ridge Drive within the great city of O'Fallon, Missouri. Is there someone here to present this? If you would, give us your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is-- excuse me. My name is Rob Lefee. I'm the attorney for the applicant. Ask Mo. 615 West Ridge Convenience LLC. This is an application for-- do you require my office address? Would you like that?
That's fine.
Okay. Excuse me. It's an application for a conditional use permit for a convenience store at 609-- or pardon me, 615 West Ridge Drive. And it's a convenience store to be operated, obviously, in a first-class manner, offering everyday staples and with convenient access to the community.
Okay. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay.
That's all I have.
If you want to take a seat, this is the public hearing. We have one speaker, Mr. Dinoff.
Thank you very much, members of the city council. My name is Arne C. A.C. Dinoff, city public advocate. I'm in favor of this application. Anything that we could do to generate new revenue, new sales tax, provide services to our residents, I'm for those type of projects. However, we have a problem within St. Charles County and actually, other pockets across the state. Springfield and Greene County have taken this up in consideration and have seized some of the illegal video slot machines, games of chance, and illegal betting video machines. It went through the court system, the Circuit Court of Greene County. There was some success there. It went to the Western District Court of Appeals, which issued a-- in favor of the city and the county of Greene that said that these are illegal and must come under the regulation and permitted by the Missouri Gaming Commission. They did not appeal to the Missouri Supreme Court in time, to my understanding, that I know of and I believe that the case now lies on the side of municipalities, on the side of children in favor of families. I would ask that the city council put a condition on Doghouse Bar and Grill to allow no video slot machines, no games of chance.
This is not Doghouse Bar and Grill, everybody.
It's the one on West Ridge.
That's right.
It's a convenience store.
That's right.
What's the name of it?
You said the Doghouse Bar and Grill.
I misspoke. That's the next one.
I'm just--
But the convenience store on West Ridge, whatever the name may be. You didn't have to call me out on it, but if you want to be disrespectful, I could say a lot of things about you, Mr. Mayor. But there should be a condition put on this convenience store as the IGA store in St. Charles. I have seen 12-year-olds go up and put a $20 bill into the machine and play at a grocery store, games of chance, slot machines. And so, I want to make sure that there's a condition, no video slot machines, no games of chance. Let's uphold the Western District Court of Appeals of Missouri and let's protect our children of our community and our families and let's make sure that that condition is added because the Planning and Zoning didn't have the guts to put that on as a condition. And I ask that you, as elected officials, protect children and families of our community. Thank you.
All right. We have no other speakers. We'll go ahead and close the public comment. Rob, if you want to come back up. Any questions from the council? Mr. Kewen.
You planning on putting gambling machines in the convenience store?
I think that it is being considered. Of course, as was discussed last week at the Planning and Zoning Committee, my client will obey any applicable laws by the city or state authorities. But as of right now, there's voluminous litigation about it, but it hasn't been resolved. So, there is the thought to have that, to have the gambling machines.
That answer actually surprised me, so.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I have one. Can I ask you, your client's name is A.S.K.?
A.S.K., three capital letters.
Capital letters, so uppercase.
Upper, yeah. M.O. six, whatever it is.
Yeah.
West Ridge, yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
We've had a little confusion on that.
Well, I understand, and yeah, that's it.
I thought I'd ask.
Yeah, certainly, yeah.
Oh, come on. Come on. Ask?
Okay. Any other questions?
Thanks, sir.
Okay. Thank you all.
Brings to Bill 7718. Motion for first reading by title only.
Ragsdale.
Motion by Councilwoman Ragsdale, second.
Cook.
Second by Councilwoman Cook. Councilwoman Ragsdale, please present the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bill number 7718, an ordinance granted, granting a conditional use permit to ask Missouri, or Mo. 609 West Ridge Convenience LLC to allow a convenience store without fuel sales under certain conditions on a certain tract of land located at 615 West Ridge Drive within the great city of O'Fallon, Missouri.
Thank you. Next is a public comment to consider approval of an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to Hawthorne Investors LLC to allow a restaurant with a drive-through under certain conditions on a certain tract of land located at 609 South Main Street within the city of O'Fallon, Missouri. Give us your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Bickings. I am a project manager at a local architecture and engineering firm. Our address is 12 Sun and Drive, Maplewood, Missouri, 63143. Here to present the Starbucks project located at 609 South Main Street, and happy to take any questions you all may have.
Okay. If you want to take a seat, this is a public hearing. Mr. Deenoff.
Thank you once again, members of council. My name is Arne C. A.C. Deenoff, city public advocate. This is a very spirited discussion last week at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, which I participated in and publicly testified. Exactly how many coffee locations or coffee venues do we need within a four or five-block, five-block area? We're going to put some of the businesses out of business and have some white elephants of vacant buildings, I presume. So how many coffee stations do we actually need? They plan on putting in three lanes of stacking. There's congestion very much in this area, and if you look to see, we have a do-not-block intersection at those two city blocks, and our O'Fallon Police Department refuses to enforce any of those signs. I have never in 19 years ever seen enforcement of blocking those two intersections, especially going southbound on Main Street, and that's of major concern. This is in a special highway district. They probably could utilize the tall pole signs because they're so close to Interstate 70. But if you look at their other locations at Bryan Road and their other location at Fizey and Missouri Highway K, their stacking doesn't work. They end up into the roadway where the Fire Protection District headquarters are, and they end up back onto Fizey Road at sometimes in peak hours. I have a feeling that's going to happen here, and I have a feeling that they haven't done enough mitigation to cut down on the congestion and the possible backups. There was no traffic study, unfortunately, that was not performed. I feel a traffic study is needed at this very congested area. It takes 20 to 30 minutes to go from Missouri Highway P down to Interstate 70 at times during the congestion of rush hour traffic. As I said, the intersections are blocked. This area is a total cluster. This will add additional commute times and additional stacking of traffic and blocking of intersections because our O'Fallon Police Department does not enforce basic traffic laws. I ask that this property have a right in and a right out onto South Main Street rather than allowing any left turns. Allowing left turns is going to cause more congestion, more traffic safety, more accidents, more injuries, and it's just not copacetic to our downtown area.
You have 15 seconds.
For those reasons, I'm in favor of the application, but I think you need to put enough conditions to protect our community and to make sure that it doesn't become a cluster and become a traffic nightmare. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan, if you want to come back up, we'll go ahead and close the public comment portion. Any other questions from the council? Debbie?
So let's just kind of clear a few things. There will not be three lanes of stacking, correct?
Correct.
And we discussed at Planning and Zoning that there's enough stacking room for 16 cars, but that is unusual for you to ever have that many cars in your line.
Very correct, yes.
And then the exit coming off is not actually coming off onto Main Street, it's coming off of.
Murray. Correct.
So, and then we're also going to make it where people cannot cut through there anymore, and then you'll have an area for the employees to park.
That is correct.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Bib.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for clarification, so that the cut through for the employee parking, that's going to be blocked off, so it's not just striping?
What do you mean by cutoff? We're going to put paints, paints on the entrance there and put signage, but it won't be blocked off.
Is there a code restriction that prohibits it from being curbed?
I don't believe so.
My preference would be that we block it permanent, that, I think, if you just have striping, people are going to try to drive back through the other way because they miss a turn or something. But I'd rather see it just blocked off to where you can't drive across.
The issue with blocking it is once an employee would come and park in that area, they would be required to drive back out through that drive-through exit there. That's why we do propose that that just be an exit only there for the employees to leave onto the West Terra Lane.
Yeah, I understand. I'd still rather see it just blocked.
Okay. Anybody else? Debbie?
Nathan, one of the reasons, too, they were leaving that open is so that people who get in line, change their mind, or whatever reason, they still have an area that they can get out of line without going up to get to the speaker. There'll be this kind of a bailout spot before they actually order.
That is correct. Thank you.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Debbie.
Could you tell us tonight why you're requesting the double reading?
Yeah, so Starbucks has a certain quota of stores that they like to try to open within each region. We're hoping to get this location open as soon as possible, and that's why we're requesting the double reading tonight. We are working through the plans. The TI drawings are all ready to go, and we're hoping to get this project moving forward as quickly as possible.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, sir. Brings to Bill 7719. Ms. Cook?
Yes, Mayor, could we please suspend the rules tonight and allow for a second reading for the reasons that he just presented?
All right. Motion by Councilwoman Cook to suspend the rules. Do I have a second?
Ragsdale.
Second by Councilwoman Ragsdale. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Brings to Bill 7719. Motion for first reading by title only.
Cook.
Motion by Councilwoman Cook, second.
Ragsdale.
Second by Councilwoman Ragsdale. Councilwoman Cook, please present the bill.
Thank you. Bill number 7719, an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to Hawthorne Investors LLC to allow a restaurant with a drive-through under certain conditions on a certain tract of land located at 609 South Main within the great city of O'Fallon, Missouri.
Motion for second reading by title only.
Cook.
Motion by Councilwoman Cook, second.
Ragsdale.
Second by Councilwoman Ragsdale. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. O'Keefe.
Bill number 7719, second reading and consideration for adoption and ordinance granting a conditional use permit to Hawthorne Investors LLC to allow a restaurant with a drive-through under certain conditions on a certain tract of land located at 609 South Main Street within the city of O'Fallon, Missouri.
Motion for final passage.
Cook.
Motion by Councilwoman Cook, second.
Ragsdale.
Second by Councilwoman Ragsdale. Questions or comments? Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting's now closed.
Nine yes, zero no. Bill 7719 passed, becomes ordinance number?
7178.
7178. Thank you, Bess. Next is a public comment to consider approval of an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to QuickTrip Corporation to allow a convenience store with fuel sales under certain conditions on a certain tract of land located at 1041 and 418 South Main and 40 Daniel Drive within the great city of O'Fallon, Missouri. Someone here to present this?
Good evening, Mayor, city council, and city staff. My name is Gwen Keane. I'm with QuickTrip. For many years, we've enjoyed a long and great relationship with the city of O'Fallon. We have several locations already serving the citizens and the guests of O'Fallon, and we, just as the city's growing, we want to grow with you. So we are here tonight to ask for a conditional use permit approval so we can add a new store along Main. Happy to answer any questions I can.
All right. If you would step aside, this is a public comment. Mr. Deenoff.
Thank you very much, members of the council. My name is Arne C. A.C. Deenoff, city public advocate. QuickTrip is a great corporation. I'm proud to say that QuickTrip cares about the community. They give a lot back to the community. I'm proud to say that their public policy and their corporate policy is not to sell kratom, not to sell CBD products or hemp products, nothing that will be detrimental to our children or our families of our community. I'm also very proud that QuickTrip doesn't believe in gambling and the illegal slot machines that need to be regulated by the Missouri Gaming Commission at any of their facilities throughout the St. Louis region, and especially in the great city of O'Fallon. They have zero betting machines and zero slot machines, and so I give them kudos on that. I'm glad that they're developing the South Main location. However, there were a lot of clusters that were developed last week by the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and you're going to have a lot of unhappy residents. Let me go on the record as saying there has been zero traffic safety law enforcement on South Main Street and especially at Pittman. There's been many times that I could document and document and talk to them blue in the face of these intersections being clogged and blocked maliciously and purposely on a daily basis, both northbound and southbound traffic. It seems like nobody obeys the law, nobody obeys the traffic signs. This is another busy intersection at East Pittman and South Main Street. The Pittman light is always stacked, so I would ask and have to be adamant that we have right in and right out on Pittman.
Mr. Deenoff, this is just about the conditional use permit, not the site plan, sir.
So you're going to deny me to talk about the traffic plan? That's very detrimental to our community.
This is about the conditional use permit, not the site plan.
Okay. Also, with the conditional use permit, I want to make sure that the ADA is compliant, and that is the conditional use permit. They're obliged by federal and state law to install a multi-use walkway rather than the sidewalk, the eight-foot sidewalk. I'd prefer a 10-foot sidewalk. That's our policy across the city for all conditional use permits to be paid for at the developer's expense. And I see here that they want an eight-foot sidewalk instead of a 10-foot multi-use park trail. I would ask councilmembers to talk about the traffic because that is very important, but I am for this development. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no other public comments. We'll go ahead and close the public comment. Questions from the council? Brings us to Bill 7720. Motion for first reading by title only.
Councilman Roth.
Motion by Councilman Roth. Do I have a second?
Ottemore.
Second by Councilman Ottemore. Councilman Roth, please present the bill.
Bill number 7720, an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to QuickTrip Corporation to allow a convenience store with fuel sales under certain conditions on a certain tract of land located at 1041 and 418 South Main Street and 40 Daniel Drive within the city of O'Fallon, Missouri.
Thank you. Brings to Bill 7721. Motion for first reading by title only.
Ragsdale.
Motion by Councilwoman Ragsdale, second.
Cook.
Second by Councilwoman Cook. Councilwoman Ragsdale, please present the bill.
Bill number 7721, an ordinance providing for the approval and acceptance of the dedication of sanitary sewers for maintenance by the city of O'Fallon, Missouri for First Baptist Church of O'Fallon at 8750 Veterans Memorial Parkway.
Thank you. Brings to Bill 7722. Motion for first reading?
Hurwicke.
Motion by Councilman Hurwicke, second.
Ottemore.
Second by Councilman Ottemore. Councilman Hurwicke, please present the bill.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. Bill number 7722, an ordinance approving a cooperation and reimbursement agreement between Great Rivers Greenway and the city of O'Fallon to reimburse a portion of the design cost for the Darden Greenway Sports Park to Bluebird Meadow Park project in an amount not to exceed $400,000.00.
Thank you. Brings to Bill 7723. Motion for first reading?
Bib.
Motion by Councilman Bib, second.
Cascola.
Second by Cascola. Councilman Bib, please present the bill.
Bill number 7723, an ordinance approving a cost appropriate agreement between Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission and the city of O'Fallon to delineate project costs, ownership, maintenance responsibilities, and funding reimbursements for the Technology Drive Bridge replacement for the Darden Greenway Connector project.
Thank you. Brings to Bill 7724. Motion for first reading?
Ottemore.
Motion by Councilman Ottemore. Do I have a second?
Kewen.
Second by Councilman Kewen. Councilman Ottemore, please present the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bill number 7724, an ordinance approving an agreement between St. Charles County and the city of O'Fallon to reimburse a portion of the construction cost for Darden Greenway Sports Park to Bluebird Meadow Park project in an amount not to exceed $450,000.
Thank you. Brings to Bill 7725. Motion for first reading?
Councilman Roth.
Motion by Councilman Roth, second.
Cascola.
Second by Cascola. Councilman Roth, please present the bill.
Bill number? Bill number 7725, an ordinance approving an agreement between the St. Charles County and the city of O'Fallon to reimburse a portion of the cost for Tom Ginever Avenue and North Cool Springs intersection improvements, project in an amount not to exceed $554,952.
Thank you, sir. Brings to Bill 7726. Motion for first reading?
Cook.
Motion by Councilwoman Cook, second.
Ragsdale.
Second by Councilwoman Ragsdale. Councilwoman Cook, please present the bill.
Thank you. Bill number 7726, an ordinance providing for the approval and acceptance of the dedication of streets, storm sewers, excluding detention, and water main and, what is this, who wrote that? For maintenance by the city of O'Fallon, Missouri for the Bryan Road Commercial Project.
Thank you. Brings to Bill 7727. Motion for first reading?
Kewen.
Motion by Councilman Kewen. Do I have a second?
Cascola.
Second by Cascola. Councilman Kewen, please present the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bill number 7727, an ordinance approving an agreement between St. Charles County and the city of O'Fallon to reimburse a portion of the cost for the Hoff Road Phase II project in an amount not to exceed $1,358,160.
Thank you. Brings to Bill 7728. Motion for first reading?
Cascola.
Motion by Cascola, second.
Councilman Roth.
Second by Councilman Roth. Councilman Cascola, please present the bill.
Bill number 7728, an ordinance approving amendment number one to the original agreement between St. Charles County and the city of O'Fallon to reimburse a portion of the cost for the West Terra Lane realignment project in an amount not to exceed $6,49,200.
Thank you, sir. Questions or comments on Resolution 213, 2025D? Seeing none. Motion second to introduce.
Hurwicke.
Motion by Councilman Hurwicke, second.
Kewen.
Second by Councilman Kewen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. O'Keefe.
Resolution 213, 2025D, a resolution authorizing an agreement with a very specific company providing for the purchase of new recycle carts in an amount not to exceed $1,177,177.84.
Thank you. Motion second to approve.
Hurwicke.
Motion by Councilman Hurwicke, second.
Kewen.
Second by Councilman Kewen. Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting's now closed.
Nine yes, zero no. Resolution D's been approved. Bring questions or comments on Resolution E. Seeing none. Motion second to introduce.
Hurwicke.
Motion by Councilman Hurwicke, second.
Bib.
Second by Councilman Bib. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. O'Keefe.
Resolution 213, 2025E, a resolution authorizing an agreement with ESRI providing for maintenance, support, and licensing of the city's geographic information system in an amount not to exceed $199,200.
Thank you. Motion second to approve.
Hurwicke.
Motion by Councilman Hurwicke, second.
Bib.
Second by Councilman Bib. Councilmembers, please cast your vote. Nine yes, zero no. Resolution E's been approved. Questions or comments on Resolution F? Seeing none. Motion second to introduce.
Hurwicke.
Motion by Councilman Hurwicke, second.
Kewen.
Second by Councilman Kewen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. O'Keefe.
Resolution 213, 2025F, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Sintas, providing for city uniform apparel services.
Thank you. Motion second to approve.
Hurwicke.
Motion by Councilman Hurwicke, second.
Kewen.
Second by Councilman Kewen. Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting's now closed.
Nine yes, zero no. Resolution F has been approved. Questions or comments on resolution G? Ms. Ragsdale?
Thank you. I just wanted to verify, correct me if I'm wrong, when vehicles are purchased, the city that the vehicle is housed in gets a sales tax, not the city where the vehicle is purchased. So O'Fallon will still be getting the sales tax on the purchase of these vehicles, correct?
The city doesn't pay sales tax, so that wouldn't be the case for regular citizens. That's exactly correct.
Okay.
If a vehicle was purchased at Broadway Ford and they lived in O'Fallon, O'Fallon would receive the sales tax.
Thank you for the clarification. So the city is not losing any sales tax regardless?
And these are state bids, too.
Thank you.
Correct? These are state bids?
I'm sorry.
These are all state bids?
No. No, Mayor, they're not. Actually, it was a formal bid I went out for, for these vehicles.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments? Motion second to introduce.
Cascola.
Motion by Councilman Hurwicke. Second by Cascola. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. O'Keefe.
Resolution 213, 2025G, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Broadway Ford, providing for police vehicles and administrative vehicle in an amount not to exceed $802,568.80.
Thank you. Motion second to approve.
Hurwicke.
Motion by Councilman Hurwicke, second.
Cascola.
Second by Cascola. Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting's now closed.
Nine yes, zero no. Resolution G's been approved. Questions or comments on resolution H?